Councilor, we do have a call. At this time, I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Jackson if you'd be so kind to give us an indication.
Yes, sir. Thank you. If you're by his, you know, we thought we just thank you for your problem over the city, Lord God, and over this universe. Lord God, we thank you that your kingdom come. You will be done on earth itself as it is in heaven. Lord God, we just submit ourselves to your will. Lord God, we mind our minds and the minds of Christ. We have seen your spirit will reign and abide in us and throw this council in this evening, Lord God, that us do all those things that you have set forth for your purpose. Lord God, you do always be careful to give your name to glory. We thank you for presenting all this poor recovery and speedy recovery, Lord God, and just thank you that there's your unity in your body. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, now, please.
President Bullock.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlene.
Present.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Present.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Here.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Here.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
As stated before, we do have a call. Uh, we have four business partners. Uh, essentially, twenty-nine and twenty-one, we're gonna vote it. The buyer choose, the rent choose, we will hold it off until work session. Councilwoman Stephanie, I would ask for some additional information. We will vote on it at our next meeting.
Buyer chief?
Right, yeah. Councilman Johnson, I think he said something about contracts. We'll come up tomorrow. I'm gonna ask the council to vote for the film permit. Uh, we have a film company here, uh, videotaping the summer homecoming activities and stuff like that. They've already paid the, uh, the fee. So we just need to verify at the phone. And other business partners. Councilwoman Young. Councilwoman Thompson.
Yes, the other business, I've come, I mentioned, uh, the two-person council meeting about the area that I'm, uh, Berber King back up in there is terrible. And, uh, I, um, we voted before to put the money to use out of the gas tax. And, uh, I already put in, um, I have, I have their attorney to do up the contract. And I wanted to vote on it tonight so I can get this, this project done over there right here.
Okay. You know, it's, uh, you actually, uh, no, Paul. I would like to put the buyer's secrets legally on. I would prefer to say that it's a next council meeting. If I have some information, I'm getting it documented there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a dissertation to the state of it. I respect you, I, I will. Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilwoman, yeah, Councilwoman Randolph.
You blew my mind, sir.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay, so now, now I'm good. Um, grass, the, uh, the grass cutting and beautification money that we had, um, council members, um, I don't know if it's, it's rollover dollars or not, but for those who are not finished and still have the, uh, that dollar amount, can we, um, vote to roll it over if we have some left over today?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Randolph.
No, I, I just wanna ask them about, she was talking about, what, you talking about the parking lot?
No, no, I have, uh, I have, it's, it's a big, it's been, it's spread it out now, it's a big, huge hole that, uh, about three or four of them now, that, uh, the cars, they're not able to, it's, it's bad.
Well, we don't have, behind Berber King?
No, um, the street is in my war. That's the street.
You talking about?
You got the other.
No, we saw a accident because it was in, in a, in a parking lot area.
No, it ain't in a parking lot. It's the street.
Okay.
They, they knocked the sign down. I think it's what it is. It was, it was, it was a shit.
You talking about where the cave in is at?
The cave in. No, I'm not talking about when you come off of Somerville and you turn on Hickory Street back in there. You know, when you go back to what Don O'Keefe said, that's, that's my area right there. That's the street I'm talking about.
I was just asking.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about your area. I'm talking about.
No, no, no.
No, I ain't doing no parking lot.
Don't say that's probably a problem.
Oh, I know. I already know that.
I know, I'm just.
No, no, I know about that. I know that's probably a problem. The part I'm talking about is the street.
Okay.
I don't do nothing soundless, I check everything.
Okay, we have a call. Erbkey, I mean Hickory Road, grass cutting, rollover.
It was something else.
We're there.
It wasn't just one thing about the homecoming parade, but we're gonna take it to work session.
Yeah, take it, I, I, anything else, now?
Yes, well, I need to take that to a work session about, uh, uh, waiver fee, whether I can take that, okay, that's all I need to know.
All right.
Thank you.
With the additional items, and, do I have a motion to approve this, how?
Some move, Mr. President.
I have motion for a Councilwoman Youngblood to go outside.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Bowlene. And a follow-up discussion. Roll call.
President Bullock.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlene.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
As stated before, we do have a call. And I'm gonna tell you like this, tell you the code of last, when you're gonna be home.
Which, which one was that?
The last one.
She had my job.
The last one.
I know it was the last one, boy. He's still married, what is that?
All right, first we have the, uh, fall twenty-nineteen twenty, twenty.
As stated before, uh, we need to have some, a road, financial roadmap in place by twelve oh one tonight. Go ahead, Councilman.
Mr. President, I know that this is going, nobody else may feel this way, I may be the only one, and that wouldn't be very unusual, but, um, I just have a lot of lingering questions. And I was not able to, because of our completed schedules, I wasn't even able to have a discussion with, with Mr. Thompson. And, um, he wasn't able to be present when we had the, the meeting. There was some mix-up about whether or not the, the meeting was supposed to be had and this, that, and the other, um, even though we had, had done what we were supposed to do without contacting those that we were supposed to. But despite all that, there are just some lingering questions that, that I have, not only about community development, but about some other things too. And I, and I, I, I can't give you an articulable reason why, because we have, we've been having meetings, everybody's had meetings like they're, they're supposed to. Um, but I, I would ask that we continue with the present budget and have some more time to work through. Um, I just feel like there's just a, a general feeling of maybe confusion or, or, not necessarily confusion, but uncertainty. Now, I may be the only one that feels that way. If so, I would gladly demure to the, the, the people who feel more certain about it. So, but I just wanted to put that out there. And, and I put that in motion form that we continue this because of some, some questions that, that we're there, that we continue this budget, give ourselves a little more time to be aligned with.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Youngblood. Do we have a second?
Say.
Second, Councilwoman Jackson. Open for discussion, Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Randolph.
You know, I, um, I feel that this budget that the mayor presented to us is unsatisfactory to our constituents. You know, you got the, the, the gas tax on it, you know, it's many hikers on there that, uh, I'm unsatisfied with. Also, you got, uh, they cut the regulation administrator's assistant out, I mean, Nika Eric, uh, Erickson, uh, I'm sorry, messing up her name. Uh, they cut her out the budget and she got EEOC lawsuit. So, if we really wanna vote on that budget and, and, and the cutting her position out when it got, 'cause we set ourselves up for failure.
Another, Congress, Councilwoman Jackson, and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Jackson.
Okay, and I guess my only thing, um, is I would say would be that we put something in place now so we can continue working on this and even have a date that we were set to pass and for, they say that is set to go into motion. The budget we choose, if we continue to work on it, or at time we continue this budget going forward. So I just ask that we look at that. I would like to know those items, even though I've seconded this motion.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Councilwoman.
Thank that wisdom.
Yeah, I feel that, um, we need to continue with the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget because of, uh.
Twenty-nineteen.
I said twenty-eighteen.
Okay.
Uh, because of, uh, our, our work study with the, um, the pay scale and also with the, um, with, uh, bringing the, with the workers being, uh, brought back. Uh, we need to see where that we have the money, um, for our day-to-day operation and it's, it's important to the citizen.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, what, three month time period?
It, it doesn't matter with the timeframe, if I'm picking off. I'm not, I, I just, I don't wanna rush ourselves, I don't wanna get too much time. I think that we need to be reasonable, I, you know, Ms. President, I don't know about the time period, I mean, I, I, I think that we've got some good dialogue going, I just think that we need to, to, um, stay focused on it and, and, um, the, I think, I think a minimum is a gracious amount of time to have something done.
Councilwoman Randolph, so you, so you need some time to meet with your committee and stuff like that?
Well, I'd like to meet with, I've met with, we had a committee meeting, but I, yes, but, and we could do that again, but I need some time to meet with Mr. Thompson.
So, what about a couple of weeks?
Just a month. Just do a month.
It didn't take a month to meet, meet with Mr. Thompson?
That's the longest time.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, just in case there's, you know, I don't know what Mr. Thompson's got going on, I don't know what anybody's got going on, I'm just saying.
Okay.
I like getting it done, you know, next week, but.
Councilwoman.
It is, is this.
Not two months, is what I'm getting at.
It's more than that involved, I know you're in, very excellent, but it's more than that involved, uh, we have some tremendous recommendations that have come out of the dialogue, some, some huge recommendations that have come out of the dialogue. We have a lot of paperwork to go through, including finding out if we, we pay Auburn not to get the pay plan, uh, because that is included in the proposed budget. We have a lot to come through, um, and you were just saying, don't put yourself in trouble. You got somebody with EEOC complaint and you really wanna vote them out of the budget, that's to consider too as well. So it's more than, um, Councilwoman Youngblood, and I know she knows that, uh, meeting with Mr. Thompson.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, it's a lot more than, um, because of this, this, this whole time. Right, right. And this whole timeline thing and, and, uh, these hodgepodge of meetings on, on last week and now it's September thirtieth, so, it's, it's a lot.
Uh, Councilwoman, uh, you had your hand up, Councilwoman Thompson?
Look.
Okay, Councilwoman Jackson and Councilwoman Thompson, so the call for.
I mean, I, I would say, suggest, um, that we consider at least the first quarter, that would give us a, a opportunity to meet once a week, um, to look at every page, um, because we noticed that when looking at, like, take for instance Public Works, the traffic and other items was zeroed out, but they were found on another page and it was Public Works continued. We need to make sure that we have all that in line, we need to make sure that our treasurer put over recommendations that we're giving, that she have an opportunity to have those back to us and we have an opportunity to look and say, is that feasible or not? I would suggest, and we don't have to do it, that we look at meeting every, um, week until we can get that in order before, um, December tenth, that we have a budget in place and it starts effective January first. That's our full first quarter, we're doing this and then we have the remaining three quarters.
Councilwoman Thomas, the call for.
Yes, and, and another thing too, we have to look at that, we, we receive other information dealing with our recreational department and, um, it's dealing with money, so we have to look at that too.
Roll call, now, please.
President Bullock.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlene.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
I'm out of the same.
Next, uh, this is our contracts, Councilman.
Yes, um, with the contracts, I had just got, um, feel by the attorney, and he said that, uh, right now we need to start running the contracts off the order, Council, and I was reading the line he got, he said, none of these contracts appear to be, none of them, each of these contracts should be approved by vote by the city council and presented to the mayor for execution. All contracts are required to carry insurance and must have a city business license. So I'm not really sure, um, about this here, but, um, he, he has the contract, get prepared for me.
Just making, making contracts.
Okay, I got contracts served with Brian Griffin, contract to serve with Teresa Lanier, uh, maintenance contract with Ray Brown, uh, maintenance contract with Fred Holmes, and maintenance contract with Weyton.
Uh, you know, the motion on the floor, paper that we all forgot.
Yes, that's on, yes, I'd like to make a motion to have moved forward, um, to get these contracts executed as quick as possible, as long as they have all the documents necessary to move forward with this contract.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilman Johnson, second, Councilwoman Youngblood, discuss.
Uh, in the.
Before they done, Councilman and Randolph.
In, in the, uh, all of the meetings that we go through as counselors, one of the meetings we had with, uh, the good people from the state, he indicated that, uh, you know, once we cast a vote, whether it's pending or not, without that documentation in front of us to prove that, we are putting ourselves in a lifeless situation. So, as much as I appreciate that, you know, if you could get me the, the shows that they all have permits, I'd be willing to do that.
Every last one of these already on the process. They already on the, they got the license and everything, it was out of, that's the board funding.
Right.
They got everything, so these ain't some new ones just came out.
Right, I didn't think so.
No, no, but these ones already, right, these are insured and everything.
This was signed in your council, this is perfected from you?
My question was.
Okay.
I know some of them guys been doing work for you already, and I know that they already have the insurance, so why would the attorney tell you bring it before the council?
I have no idea, I've been bothering them.
Attorney, I didn't blame, man. I'm telling you, if, if you already know that, that, that those guys already had insurance and you used it before, you know.
I got a level with the contract and the following, so I'm just following through to go ahead and, and hold back or slow down these, you get paid.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying, you know, this, this, stop getting from getting paid, you know, have they did the work yet?
Can I say something?
Councilwoman Benjamin. Then, Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman Jackson.
I was waiting up, had a lot going on. Part, part of my question was what, um, Councilman Randolph asked me to win. So, um, Mr. Woody Jones, what's that?
Jones.
That's what he instructed you to do?
Right, here's a level right here, if you wanna look at it, it's on that one. I'm just saying, but he also leveled it.
I think I do level it too. Boy, that was, yeah, 'cause he sent you a level.
This is sent to the mayor, I think, actually.
I think I've leveled it one time.
Right, he's, he's sent you.
So we have, there's, there's a lot in that, that you said, a lot, a lot of stuff we, we voted on already and a lot have gone through the process, um, um, through the clerk's office, and I'm trying to see what else are we doing, what else are we taking care of?
I just wanna make sure.
Are they like million dollar contracts?
No, 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 it's just basically saying that each of the, none of these contracts appear to exceed the statute threshold on the, either the application public work, fifty thousand dollars, uh, competitive bids of fifteen thousand, long. In other words, he just giving us a breakdown?
Are they over five thousand?
No, no, no. So, um, he, he just wanna make sure they got the, uh, the proper credentials and base us off.
Okay, how about Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman Jackson, and Councilwoman. Oh, he got his hand up.
Mr. President, uh, the procedure has been set hours, three years ago.
Yep.
We were informed by our artists and our insurance agents that was putting the city in a liable situation. The committee was moved, and I was chairman of administrative committee, that we came together with our attorney, the clerk and the treasurer, and we formed the procedures that will allow us to do business legally, that is, people must have a business license and insurance, if they exceed three or more workers, then they have, got to have liability insurance. Most of the work that's being done only incorporates perhaps one person. This is a huge thing that now it's got to come from the council. None of these contracts is over a couple of thousand dollars. Uh, I don't think none of them exceed five, so I don't understand what is going on. Matter of fact, one of the contracts, the Johnsons, is being worked for me, and has been paid. And, um, but I think, I think we need to get some clear, some, some understanding as to what we need to naturally want to think decent and ill and most of the league. So I think our attorney needs to come here and give us more indefinite information as to why this is being required, was it this many days?
Thank you, sir. I, I live in, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman.
Well, I'm like this here, you know, it's somehow, you know, during that time our examiner was here, some of our council people talked with the examiner, when the examiner, the state examiner was here, some of our council people talked with them on some of the things that I read, that was going on with the contracts. This is how this came about, but, uh, we have, our clerk, uh, she always makes sure before anything done, we had to have all of the proper thing, but just like Councilwoman LaShaw said, he had put a policy in place, but I think what it is, uh, they want, want us to, some of, where the state examiner, whoever, I let her finish, but that's where this come about, you know, so y'all will hear from me.
I like the sources from you. Okay, I'll come, okay. First of all, um, I believe and what I understand is that this should have been going on for all the time, that all contracts are supposed to be approved by the council. That's been my understanding, um, from the moment I got on the council. Um, and it's not just for contracts that the mayor have worked on, or Public Works have worked on, it's for council members as well, and it's not a set fee, it's funds. That's my understanding and to further reiterate, um, what, and to go further than what Councilwoman Bowlene stated, um, not only was I informed, um, in my meeting, that we shouldn't vote on pending items because we're still liable, and I stated, um, I think from a long time ago, that I don't own pending items, um, but it's also stated that we need to verify that every item is in place. And if you recall, and I gave the example, um, that we actually had a department head make us aware that, um, some things were in place that turned out not to be in place. We voted on that based on that information, and they shared with me that the council is still liable for that. Now, I don't know how that's gonna be, and it'll all flesh out in its time, but, um, what I would suggest or recommend is that we table that, you bring the items, including all the things back before us, and then we approve the contract at that time. But if you don't want to, I don't vote on pending items anyway.
So.
You said pending, they have all the.
I thought, yeah, uh, so.
They didn't move a pending, not this one.
So, uh, you, you have all the documentation, everything?
Yes.
Okay.
For a document exam?
Okay.
It's through the process.
Is I really, okay, they just called for the vote?
Yeah.
President Bullock.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlene. Councilwoman Youngblood.
I'm sorry, what are we gonna know?
The contract.
Oh, well, not the contract, not whether we're supposed to, they don't know contracts, who votes on contracts?
Contracts.
Yes, yes, a lot of your contracts.
Councilwoman Jackson.
I was saying.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes, this is not, uh, pending.
Oh, it's not, no, sorry.
Thank you, okay.
All right, the film permit, go ahead, Councilman.
I, I had a question, um, and, and just a comment, and I'd like, Ms. Jackson said, I, I thought that we had, in fact, I think Councilwoman Jackson had, had brought it up, that before contracts were signed, as if they needed to come before the council, and I think, I could be wrong, but I think the spirit of that was to make sure that there were a lot of big contracts that were getting let out, and there were some people who were not licensed and not insured or performing a lot of work. Discretionary monies, we each get a certain amount of discretionary money, and it's not a whole lot. I mean, in fact, the whole bunch doesn't even, if we spent the whole, whole discretionary amount in one fell swoop, it wouldn't be enough to have to do the bid law. So, but our discretionary monies, contracts we do with that, um, they're little piddly things, I don't know why they should have to come, and we're, we're each liable for that, if we don't do it right by that, we're gonna have to, we'll get in trouble. So, you know, I don't know why the little contracts with discretionary money should have to come back before the contracts. I mean, how does the council feel about that?
I think this one, both of us should just kill it all.
Yeah, I think.
Then, 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 Councilwoman.
Jackson, if I may respond, so my actual vote on last year, my motion on last year was that all expenditures, not contracts, so some contracts, we don't understand that purchase orders are contract, but some are actually not done through a contract, so it was actually expenditures, all expenditures, be approved by the council. Um, but where I heard, um, this information was at our lead trainings, that we should be approving contracts. And that, I don't know, and, um, maybe we can look, they didn't say contracts under two thousand, three thousand, indiscretionary in budgets, you know, they just said council should approve contracts and that the mayor actually execute the contracts, so we can get some clarity.
Well, if, if that's it, we need to be approving, then we need to be approving, whether it's for two dollars or two thousand something.
A decent amount.
Uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman LaShaw.
You know, it was hard, whether it's called discretionary or, it's, it's about, it's still taxed as much, and that was one of the reasons we were cited, because our discretionary was being used that would put this city in legal ramification. So that was the reason the procedure was established. A lot of that came because of discretionary funds.
Councilwoman Thomas, then we move it on.
And, and when we did use our discretionary for, for, to work in our, we always have a contract done, and our in-house attorney always did the contract for whatever, how we spent our money, if we're doing something award, you always did a contract, and it was, it was brought, before, some of the contracts that they've done were brought before the council, about to get approved. So when we started out, you know, I write, I like big, like I say, over five thousand dollars, anything over five thousand, it was always coming before us anyway to get approved.
Mr. Calo, please, Councilwoman.
Mr. President.
Jackson, then.
I didn't know this came about because of discretionary, of mere discretionary fund use. I thought this came about because of big contracts they were getting through in all these emergencies that went on around the city, and because there was a contractor unlicensed, they got through the system somehow. I didn't know this was merely because of maybe somebody went about Halloween candy, uh, from discretionary. I didn't know we were talking about discretionary, I thought we were talking about all these, these huge contracts that got through the system somehow. Nothing, uh, that huge gets to us without it being verified through the clerk's office and whoever else is supposed to be doing verification. When stuff gets to the council, it's supposed to be already verified, checked out. We don't check insurance, we don't check licenses, we don't check those things, those things are checked downstairs, and once it's, there you go, supposed to be, and once it's submitted to us, that downstairs is telling us everything has checked out. You may vote on it.
Hello, Councilwoman Jackson and Councilwoman LaShaw.
Um, if I, if I recall.
Go ahead.
If I recall correctly, um, Mr., Councilwoman LaShaw and, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, I, I actually was the person that kind of caused this error, um, and, Councilwoman LaShaw, you may not remember that you added me to that committee to assist. What happened was I was trying to get a tree cut down in, in my area, and it may have been discretionary money that I was trying to utilize, but it wasn't about discretionary.
money that I was trying to utilize, but it wasn't about discretionary, I didn't know the process, and so, I went to Public Works, they told me they used this person, uh, I went to that person, and just doing business, um, in, in court services would require to have certain things, and so I just asked him certain questions, I didn't, didn't know that he was not required to have, and Jim stated to me that he had been working with the city for twenty years, and he was never required to have this, and so I brought it back to the council, and then, uh, Councilwoman LaShaw took it up in this committee, we got insurance provider, and that's how that came about, it wasn't about big or small contracts, um, though we did find out afterwards, um, that there were large contracts that were being given out without the councils approval, that were, um, done in a way that they shouldn't have been done with the union contractors, and again, Councilwoman, you are correct, it's supposed to be verified, um, downstairs, where parking is, um, but if they miss it, and we vote on it according to what they say, and I said, you know, I don't have the time to go and verify, if you don't see it in hand, if you haven't called and had an opportunity to verify, I recommend you send, and that was the advice that I received, and that's the advice that I'm giving to others, not to keep the process delayed, the process obstruct the process, but to kind of do us all free and clear of any other things, but that we may not know it, because we expect the people that gives us this information by signing this to us, it has been vetted, it has been verified, and this is in truth, in fact, correct, and, but that hasn't happened, and so we have to be a little bit more cautious and take it a bit more time.
All right, Councilwoman LaShaw, then call it further.
I had to be funny, Council, there's no contract for Halloween candy, the, the, the insurance people and the articles were saying we was paying people however discretionary, which creates a liability, and that we should not do that, that was the reason for this insurance, and then, and then the license came into place, so it was, it was to protect the city, nothing else, to protect the city from liability, because once you get somebody out there cutting grass, out of your discretionary, then it becomes worse on the city, and therefore they're liable for whatever they do, so that's how that came about.
Okay, Mr. President.
Hold on, let, let them follow up, then Councilwoman Thomas, then I gotta get to a meeting, I said.
Come on, man.
Yeah, let's get on to these meetings and everything, I use Halloween because it popped up, it's, it's October, and, and it was just an example, actually, okay, so, okay, cause that was like a hit dog statement, and it wasn't for any hit dogs, it was because Halloween was the first thing that popped up in my mind, that's all that was.
Okay, Councilwoman Thomas, call it further.
No, come on.
Roll call.
Let's go in, I gotta go find my stuff.
Oh, well, good, oh, well, good, try, try, try.
We do, we go on the...
Okay, okay, fail, fail permit, uh, I'm gonna ask the council, like I said before, uh, do a ratified and a firm folk film amendment, then, uh, film the summer high, especially this over the weekend, and then pay everything, so, uh, I put a motion on the floor, uh, to ratify and firm, okay, uh, can follow discussion, roll call.
Does that follow the film purpose that we had in our evening?
Yes, we have a number coming up, we're gonna discuss that at the...
Okay, I read, fair permission on our evening.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, roll call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yagla?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes, we need to increase the cost.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
I think the max would be five hundred after I'm not mistaken.
We're not two fifty.
I think so.
Two fifty, I think the max is five.
You take that if I have.
Yeah, burkey.
Burkey.
I mean, not burkey.
I rolled over funds.
Hold on, Hickory.
We go for the town, we go.
I'm sorry, I put, uh, Hickory road, Hickory road.
That's a street that, uh, that's so messed up, and probably missed the worst, but we gotta get that, uh, they still going around, going back up, and I wish that they would get chewed out, I, I told my draw group council two, two times, and, you know, we need to get that area, because that's a business, that street, Hickory Street is a, is an area that cars go through, it's messed up bad.
How, how much?
Uh...
Maybe that problem.
Okay, uh, I had, huh? I don't know nothing about the casino there, I ain't been there, I told more about it early, than, uh, than the...
But, but they can make a seat.
No, me, me, them, so, uh, but, uh, I did the, uh, the PO on it, and, uh, he's gonna do it in that area for, it's, it's fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred?
Mm-hmm.
I make it nineteen hundred, fourteen hundred?
I made fourteen thousand, I made.
Oh.
Who, who was the, uh, contract?
Uh, I got, I got Jerry Bush to do it.
Oh.
Gas, gas tax, the one that we, uh, put aside and voted, they go, uh... He got a contract, he does, every time I hit a number for me, then the contract been illegal.
We just did twenty-four thousand, I didn't see, and I think every councilman I done looked at it, and I'm, I sat about...
Well, I stayed up, they do my work, I don't know about y'all. That's in my, listen, in my ward, when Jerry comes in my ward and do my work, I don't let Jerry just do the work, I stay there till I get it like I want it, I don't, I don't leave, I don't let nobody come in there and just patch me, he does good work in my ward, if you could drive through my ward and see the how I use my oil lease, how he been repairing all those potholes in my ward, they are cut out, done right, so I'm, I'm, I, I take care of wards every day.
We have a motion on the floor to ratify.
I think that's weird, if I go and use some of that gas tax.
Yes.
Well, the reason why I did it, because I been, I brought mine up two times at the council meeting, because the Hickory Street, and I'm not there, so now talk, is bad, and if you go back there, you drive back there yourself, and you'll see.
Make, make it fair, much better, why don't we Nevada gas taxes, we ever like a shot at that resource.
How, how much is in there?
I, I, I'll get back with y'all, and if you remember, and if you recall, y'all appropriated some funds to make it available for, um, Tahoe patch, and then I think y'all didn't proportion open award aid for two hundred some thousand.
Yeah, I ain't did that.
And I just checked to see what the balance was from there.
Just about.
Well, I need to get my, my...
How many, how fourteen thousand?
I, I, can I say this?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Every time I bring something and I go out my way, I've been sitting here three years, I tried to get some gas tax money before, to fix some street, and everybody talking about they got with, but who do go through the profit channel and come up here and ask you council people to, every time, I, I tell people, this is what happened, every time I bring something and go through the profit channel, to get it fixed, everybody say you got things, but do you do like I do, do you take time and do what you're supposed to, please, stop trying to buck on me.
Councilwoman, I said, give me fourteen thousand.
Mr. President, I, I don't take, Jamie, Councilwoman Thomas, you work, work so hard, so hard.
This is, this is what I get, when I ask for stuff and to help fix something.
We got a motion, we got a motion, all right, roll call, roll call.
Where's the voting to approve the allocation of money? That's strictly it.
Yes, sir.
Contractors decide everything else, that's her decision, where's allocate money?
Yeah, what if it's missing?
All right, roll call.
President Bowie?
Yes, 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 yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yagla?
I vote yes for the hardest work in councilwoman of the city council.
Councilwoman Jackson?
I vote yes for fourteen thousand to be allocated to the fixing of Rose and Morset.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes, thank you for your research, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman, I vote yes, and I'm gonna give you two of my P T F D.
I don't need them, y'all act, but this happened before, and, 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 and everybody wants to say they got hope, but are you out there doing?
Devise it up, devise it up, good, good devise it up.
Yeah, please, okay, yeah.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
I vote yes for the, the best to remain, we devise it up.
Arista?
I'm gonna...
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman, grass rolled over.
Okay, real simple, I wanna put a motion on the floor that, uh, funds, if we have any left, uh, that were, that we allocated to each ward, um, roll over, if they're, they not roll over, so, I, we, we never stated that in the motion earlier, so I would like, um, to move that it rolls over.
How, how, also the tree trimming, because, also the grass cutting, the tree trimming...
And state, and that gas tax allocation for...
I'd say it's, it's, uh, can't, can't roll it over, because we haven't left the budget that we're currently in.
Oh, it's... Yeah, they have... Yeah, if we don't, it's gonna go to your fund.
Yeah.
It's gonna go back to...
It goes away.
Goes away.
Yeah.
Cause it was not a part of the immediate budget that you all approved, so, don't care for that.
It doesn't exist in the, 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 so I wanna roll it over.
Quick, 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 quick point of order, I'm sorry to be in the middle of this, but one of us has to leave, is I need to make a quick little presentation, um, Mr. Bowie, and, and this is, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, and she is the person who headed this up, of course she get this, we are so glad that you are well and fed amongst us, your honor and rue to me.
I'll be back tomorrow.
And they have another way to save me.
Okay, uh, roll call.
I need a second.
Was there a second?
So, to roll over then, the fact that...
I, I second.
Yeah, you can.
That's, that's okay.
So, the fact that, we are allocated for grass...
Roll it over.
You can, you can just add it to the budget.
So it's being added to...
Yeah, like she said, rolled over into the current budget.
Okay, the rolling part, this seems to be...
Careful.
Careful.
Careful, okay.
Carry back. Careful, all right, roll call.
Budget today, I don't know.
Okay.
That's right, we grew...
Roll call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yagla?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman Yagla?
Mr. President, in that same thing, some of us may have just a little bit of discretionary money that we have need to, to do some stuff with, so, could, could I make that same motion for our discretionary money too?
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
I have zero.
I can't, I'm... Zero.
Well, it was one thing with the, with the hacking and stuff, we weren't able to, you know, cause we're...
Are you including travel for those that have travel?
Yeah, travel and that, okay.
Mine's, mine's able to know hypothetically, most of the zero degree.
They need to do a, uh, make sure they do a, a, a...
Oh, we do it.
Email team, I bet you want to transfer the travel to the...
Yeah, and they get ready to... For those that...
He may not know, I guess, he may not.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, email, we good.
Yeah, I'm saying, because that's why I had to...
No, no, I appreciate you keeping me clean, baby.
Councilwoman Randolph, I'm gonna take the vote.
I really appreciate it.
Councilwoman Benjamin, I'm gonna vote, Councilman.
And all a second.
All a second. Councilwoman Thomas?
Oh, I, I, I just wanted to say that everybody know, we'll be going to, uh, a graduation, uh, Tuesday?
We need to...
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, Lake, uh... The municipal, and also we'll be in train coach.
Yeah.
All right, roll call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yagla?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes. Okay, that wasn't me to lie, that's what I mean. One time I wanted to be the guy.
I'm, I'm...
Mr. President?
Thank y'all. And, and you pushing for him.
I'm, I'm just getting fourteen thousand for three years.
Y'all got time to be...